So we'll call the order of the Village of Oxford Planning Commission today, Tuesday, August the 16th, 2022. If we would all rise and please pay respects to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, if you please call the roll.
Kelly Arkles?
Here.
Justin Daley?
Here.
Sam Flynn?
Yes.
Mario Collin?
Here.
John Noel?
Here.
Jeffrey Pyle.
All right, excellent, we are all here.
What's in these regional?
Now, so do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Support.
Excellent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent, we have approved agenda for tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from May 3rd, 2022?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, meeting dated May 3rd, 2022.
Support.
Excellent, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I didn't see Kelly sneak in there. Last minute. I like it.
Snuck in there.
Any correspondence?
No.
All right, see none, we'll move on, and it brings us now to new business, and that is, so it's reviewing the site plan approval for PC-22-10 for Cloud Cannabis at 20 Church Street. I believe the applicant's here, if you'd please just stand up, tell us, you know, a little bit, a little bit about your plan, real quick, and then we'll, we'll get with Mario.
Good evening, Justin Danaskis, Danaskis Consulting Development, and we have the applicant time recorder, along with John McCloud from Cloud Cannabis, that's the operation we have under plan reform. And as you'll see, and you probably saw on the plans, this is for a site plan approval over at 20 Church Street, and really proud of what we're kind of bringing forward there, really bringing a lot of new life into the site over there, upgrading the parking, circulation, landscaping, and we're working diligently with Mario and counterparts and team on the plans, to make sure that, you know, hopefully now you see we meet and exceed all the requirements for the site plan. And I'll let John say a little bit about Cloud Cannabis, but I've had the opportunity to work with them for a number of years now, and I think they're a welcome addition to the community with how engaged they get in the communities they operate in, the quality of the work that they do on the sites, and they have a large group behind them that's been in real estate for quite a long time, so the building itself, along with the operations, I think will be a nice addition. And then so as a plug into Mario's review and so forth, we'll be answering specific questions, but it is for a marijuana retailer over on 20 Church Street, and I'll let John give a quick two cents on Cloud Cannabis.
That was really nice stuff, two cents. I'm John McCloud, co-founder and head of new markets for Cloud Cannabis. We're a vertically operated cannabis company in Michigan, born and raised in Michigan. Us and five partners started, it's still a family business, we still run it, it's still our money, we're still doing the work ourselves, so we have a full-out corporate team built out in Troy, we have over 300 employees now, I have eight retail locations open to date, 70,000 square feet of cultivation space at Kalamazoo, and a processing facility in Warren. In the process of getting this site plan approval, I'm also opening a Cedar Springs store in October, and two Grand Rapids stores before the end of the year. So really excited to come to Oxford, it'll fill the northern hole that we have in our portfolio, we think it's a good spot, and we're really excited to be part of the community. I'm a retired police officer that found cannabis as medicine, so that's at the heart of who we are as a company, but we're happy to do business in this, in this business balance.
Excellent, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Perfect. Mario, if you please start us off.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Tonight we're here to consider the proposal for this adult use marijuana retail facility. The site is located on the south side of Church Street, just east of North Washington Street, and it is zone I industrial. The lot is approximately 20,960 square feet in area, and it is currently occupied by a one-story building that's approximately 3200 square feet in floor area. There are also 16 parking spaces located on the lot. When it comes to our adult use marijuana facility requirements, over the course of the reviews, the applicant has come into compliance with all of our requirements, in terms of their hours of operation, wastewater control, security, and other operational standards, they are in compliance, as presented with, with everything, subject to some condition or reviews I'll point out in a second. And then just looking at site plan requirements for the facility, you know, the applicant is commanding to keep the facility, the building with an addition, the building elevations on the submittal include a proposed grade roof projection that will rise above the northeast portion of the building, and then this roof projection will also extend away from the building to the east, almost about 10 feet, and that are going to create a covered patio of the building entrance. So it will increase, or it will improve the aesthetic nature and aesthetic architectural characteristics of the building, so it will become a more attractive building. We always look at parking as a standard, to make sure it functions and operates efficiently, and based on their proposed number of customers, number of employees, and number of curbside parking spaces, it will function appropriately, we do believe. And then they, they have provided other details with regards to other specifics that we adhere to for all commercial facilities, and they are in compliance with our standards, up to and including everything with regards to landscape. So in the end, we would recommend that the planning commission grant site plan approval for the facility contingent upon the revised landscape plan, that includes any revisions that might be requested by the planning commission, because we know, because we have some high standards in that. An approval, it's also contingent upon approval of an odor control mechanical plan by the licensed inspector, that's in compliance with their standards, approval of the security plan by the police chief, and then any additional requirements of the village. So with that, I will take in the questions.
Excellent, thanks Mario. Any questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
The snowplow area, is that any property?
Snowplow area.
Look right at the front page, from the back, against the polyand trail.
Yeah, I think that for property, there's just been even there, we're allowed to sort things like snow and stuff, I believe is the way the property line goes.
Well, it shows us outside the property line, that's why I'm wondering, because you can't house snow on someone else's property.
Gotcha. Well, we can offload the snow and/or, I guess, look at your plan, another spot, yeah, to the east of it, more of our loading zone or different area. The deliveries are really Sprinter vans, there's not any semis or box trucks with things coming, they're pretty regular, so, or, I'm just kind of glancing at the site for a spot to put it.
Couldn't you just put it up in the triangle just above it?
I just want to make sure you don't unload snow on someone else's property.
No, exactly, we won't do that.
We get those neighbors off out there.
I think if I, well, one of the things is, you know, I've been out to that site, and I kind of took a look at, if you, the way the polyand trail comes down, I mean, the wall is almost as high as the ceiling here, so it's, you, there really isn't, you wouldn't be, I don't think, maybe, I understand what you're saying, but if, maybe infringing on that stuff, but I know that there's, the way the poly, the way the trail is, it's really high up there.
It's elevated with at least 10 feet of.
Outside the trail.
Yeah, I think just by the loading zone through the chair, I think would where we put it.
I did a little research on that, polyand trail actually owns six feet in on that, that is not polyand trail's property, that's DNR property, and you'll have to, they get very fussy about that. The other thing that I'm concerned about is your retention pond, and how that all is going to fit on the property line of the DNR right there.
Yeah, so then again, I think we can do the snow, take a handle loading zone, that little, in the grass area, and then to your point, our engineer did look, and so with the underground retention and otherwise, does look like we shouldn't have any issues with the site. We really aren't getting a whole lot of new parking space and more green space in the site, you know, where it does just fine with the drainage currently, and now it's starting to be upgraded with the increased detention. So they're not experiencing any issues now, it's only really going to be upgraded with the new engineering, so it shouldn't have problems.
Can you explain that east side, how all that east side's going to work? I was on the site, and you start off with elevations of 1661 at the road, 1662 at the road, and you're going to put your wall, go ahead and explain that, I kind of looked at it a little bit myself.
So on the east side, it's going to be a very small retaining wall, it's almost a ledge wall, I mean, max grade is going to be probably 18 inches or so on that, so even though it looks, you know, dramatic maybe now on the site, it really isn't that much once we grade the property, and then, so it's just going to be a smaller retaining wall source on the east, just as the, you know, traditional interlocking commercial, you know, block that goes for the retaining wall.
How do you plan to end it on the south side before you get into the retaining wall? I mean, before you get into the retention pond?
The detail goes all the way to the end, and then, I mean, I guess however they normally end it, just like they would end on the north side, I guess, I don't know.
Well, my concern is that when I was on the site, the property on the east side, that grade gets lower and lower and lower.
Yeah.
So how are we going to make sure we keep the water, all your runoff water, from the road, because there's a foot drop all the way back to your retention pond?
Yeah, so the next thing with the grading plan, the way the parking lot will sheet with the water, it'll go all into our, you know, into our system and be retained with the underground, and so it would also keep in mind, you know, we've had the site for a while now too, there's no water drainage issues as-is, so now we're going to be upgrading and putting much more detention and opportunity to the site, so it's only going to improve in my opinion, and there hasn't been an issue there now, and so, and again, just with the grading, the sheeting will go towards, you know, retention capture in our system, we know what we're supposed to.
Mario, is there any requirements for that retention pond being so close to the wall, the polyand trail? A six-foot property line, we have estimates here, we haven't taken off of Google on these maps, it's all through yours, so we don't really have exact numbers here, but my concern was, is that if it's too close to that wall, and I know it's all sand below it, so.
So the issue is that when it's the detention pond, and also where the retaining wall is going to meet the remaining grade, it has to be designed and constructed in such a way so it does not increase water flow onto adjacent property greater than the agricultural rate. So they will have to, I know the grading, looking at the grading sheet, they have some, you know, point elevations, but they, when they really get onto the site, they're going to have to make sure, and we'll inspect it, to make sure that it does not increase drainage at a higher rate onto adjacent property, both easement property and the property to the east. And if it, for some reason during, you know, the next rain event after construction, it does occur, they'll have to modify it, because it's ordinance requirement that they not, that any kind of improvements on their site do not increase the flow rate onto adjacent property.
Is there any thought that we need to give to the wall of the polyand trail there?
It's not to my knowledge only, but I'm not an engineer, so it might be something that once, once the site inspections occur during the grading, they'll be able to find improvements in the field that would work, based on existing conditions, and in the end, what will be important is to have the ASBILs, so after they, they've come to a conclusion, engineers and inspectors, you know, you have an ASBIL that will show exactly where they, how they constructed it, and then making sure, once again, after, after it's constructed, and after the first rain event, might, you know, it's possible to check and see, to make sure it doesn't negatively impact the adjacent property.
A couple more things, if I may, this is plenty, correct?
This is a site plan approval for, for the UCS, and then they will have to get any final approvals from the engineer, in terms of construction level detail drawings, yes, that will be reviewed by the building official and by the engineer.
So, so it sounds as though John's concern will be, can be sought at or addressed as things, so we have, we have, there's processes in place that would catch some of John's concerns.
Yeah.
Correct, okay, excellent, okay, so that answers that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, John?
I'm not ready.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The two employee parking spaces by the back of the property, are those long enough for the person in space number one to get out as well as space number two?
Meaning in terms of tapping when they, when they back out?
Yeah.
It is 18 feet deep, I know it's got a little block there as well, but that does meet ordinance requirements, so.
Because it's a fence in front of it, right?
I mean, it's right along with West Property Line?
Yes.
Yeah, there is there, but then the, the aisle width is enough, that it meets our standards, and it, and it will be enough for people to, to back out and make that turn.
Okay.
Do you have questions?
I do, if anyone else has stuff, I can do a line at the end.
Okay.
I'm actually good.
All right.
I have a few of them.
Go ahead.
Mario, on page C1, the reference different distances to schools references Google Earth as a source, is that considered best practice and/or acceptable to use that as a reference source, or is there some other means to calculate that distance?
In the past, normally, when we know of a school or any, any facility that receives school funding is in closer proximity, we would ask for a map that shows the property lines, because that's how we measure everything, from property line to property line, but I did a review of the existing facilities in, in the area, they're, they're greater than 1,500 feet away, so the, the map they've shown is sufficient at this time, because they, the distances there aren't that close.
It's not, it's contention. Yep, understood. Question was more, in fact, I mean, in the past reviews, we haven't seen Google Earth referenced as a distance source, wasn't sure if there's best practice or stuff that's going on. On the site plan, I believe it's A1, there's a reference to a roll-down steel door, which, after visiting the site, it's very clear in the parking lot, is that to be removed or used as a part of the customer entries?
Are you playing? I'm talking about, I'm not sure if you know it's 8,000 or 10,000, I should check. Mario, we can ask that. Is that the, the door that is referencing?
It'll be removed.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's not on, it, yeah, it shouldn't be on here, but it'll be removed.
Okay. Few more.
Page A2, there's, yeah, A2.0, there's a reference to signage dimensions, I just want to confirm that we're not approving, or there isn't a request to approve the signage referenced in that page.
That's correct, because they, they put it on the reference, you know, a general idea, or you get a general idea of it, but in order to put signage on, they will have to apply for sign commitment, and so whatever our requirements are at the time of their application, they'll all assign it west of Clyde with those standards.
Yeah, if it's internally limited, it'll come back.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Michelle? You're all set. Leslie?
Hi, how are you doing tonight?
Hey.
Okay, so I have a number of landscape questions and recommendations, that's the thing that I usually focus on most, and I think you guys have done a good job at, including a lot of important Michigan native plants, but I see a couple of problems that I want to suggest substitutions, but I also see a couple other calculation factors. In your plant list, and we're looking at page C5 right now, in your plant list, you, you have groupings of trees and shrubs and shrub areas, and then you have ground covers, formal grasses, and sod and seed, and you've kind of totaled all of them up to your 30% calculations, and that's really not as accurate, I don't think, as, you really should break down the shrubs and trees versus the perennials, instead of including them all. That only makes a couple of small changes, in my opinion, but, so, for example, you have a total of 519 plant materials, and then you've calculated your percentage on the right-hand corner over there, but really, you shouldn't be comparing trees to, like, Japanese pexandra, you know, they're, they're not in the same group, so if you just look instead at the top, the trees, shrubs, and shrub areas, include those together, then the percentage changes a little bit, so what happens there is that the Russian sage gets to be way too prominent in that type of plant material, it comes up to like 43%, and so my suggestion would be to substitute approximately half of the Russian sage with some other type of shrubby perennial, okay, in your design.
Sage will go like crazy, right? Won't it, like spread a lot?
Well, right, it's, yeah, it is a, it is a shrubby perennial, it looks more like a shrub than a perennial, it's, yeah.
It just like really spreads.
Yeah, and it, it's often used in landscape applications, especially commercial, because it's easy care. So that would be one thing. Another thing I have concerns about is that the existing tree that you proposed to trim is a silver maple, it's under utility lines, and the top is dying, I think the tree needs to be removed and replaced. There really shouldn't have a large tree like that under utility lines, or even try to save the tree that's there, because if it comes back, it's still under utility lines. So my suggestion is that that tree come out, and that a substitute, smaller tree, a native tree, such as a service berry, be used. There are things you can use that will not impede or interfere with those utility lines, so that would be my suggestion, and I would also buy this, meaning if you're going to remove the tree, you also do stump grani and the whole, the whole thing. The next thing in my list is the, the ground covers that you have proposed are both non-natives, and you're using a lot of them, and I understand they're commonly used, lori, pexandra, but I would like to see a significant number of Michigan native small plants and studs, such as, there's some small grasses like carricks, and some others, if you need suggestions, I can follow up with you outside the.
I don't think he's writing fast enough, so.
It's all be a day, so.
Yeah, it's been taking a lot to take, but yeah, I, I can, you know, communicate separately what I'm talking about. Your landscape architect will be able to find things that will, that will work, I'm confident of.
Yeah.
So then the next thing I have is, at the, the back of the lot, the south end, because of the prominence of the, the trail there, and the ability of people on the trail to see down into your lot, I think that, that you proposing three deciduous trees is fine, but I wonder about winter time when those trees don't have any screening at all, and so I would like to suggest that maybe you consider mixing in some evergreens that would help with screening, and I only am interested in my recommendations with, you know, native Michigan and non-diseases, you know, promoting type, okay? So you should be able, your landscape architect should be able to mix up what's back there, I know you only have like three trees, but, but there are some things that can be done there, especially because it is such a wet area. And my last recommendation is that you have a note here that says detention area to be seeded for a rain garden, so I would just say that I would suggest that the rain garden also be all Michigan natives, that's very important in any kind of retention basin, because the seeds from non-natives get swept down, and they, if they're invasive or problematic, you, you're just perpetuating the problem.
Sure.
Make sense?
Yes, sir.
And those are, I think, all of my comments.
Thanks, Leslie. I love how thorough you are with that, I mean, I just sit back and just kind of listen and, and all.
And feel shame.
Do we, is there any other questions?
I suppose I have one more. I toured the property prior to this meeting, it seems to have been vacant for quite some time with, and I know full exterior is, is in the plans from the steel siding to be repainted, of course, the additions that, that roof. Are windows going to be replaced?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're going to invest quite a bit of money in it, so.
Okay.
And we're not, we're not going to leave.
Understood, yeah, no, I mean, my final, my final, my comment is based around the, the current condition, understanding their, you know, repaint, I don't know if roofing, re-roof is on the, the agenda or not, but just confirmation that, you know, steel entry doors, windows replaced and up kept.
Yeah.
Of course, it would be, wouldn't look right if those were kept as-is and everything else is redone, but.
Correct.
Just a sanity check or comment, that might be it.
That's good.
Nothing further, just.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, John.
Mario, this loading zone access, you're looking for a waiver on this for a single-axle vehicle, that waiver has nothing to do with the industrial site and the thickness of the parking lot, correct?
No, it's just a matter of that technically the zoning ordinance records a 10 by 50.
Correct.
But it gives you the authority to alter that based on the proposed use.
What, they want to go 10 by 34 then?
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
And then, just, so then in the end, like, like, so they move out, say then, you can change back?
Yes.
I think we had this before, I can't remember, okay, so.
Yeah, because whatever the next user is, they'll have to answer the same questions, because we'll start out with 10 by 50, and then you have to talk to them.
Okay.
Okay. I think it's a very attractive design, I like, a lot of the questions and concerns that I have were addressed by my fellow members, so I am, you know, I don't have any more questions for Mario or for the applicants themselves, so if, does, if anybody else has any questions or comments? Okay, uh, seeing none, then I guess we, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan for the planning commission, the PC-22-10 at 20 Church Street for the applicant Cloud Cannabis, contingent upon the McKenna Site Plan Review Recommendations listed August the 9th, 2022.
Support. And landscape recommendations.
It's within, it's, yep, it's, it's already within there, so we have a, we have a motion by Mr. Ballard, and also, we have a second.
Support.
So if we, Madam Secretary, you please call the vote.
Um, second by McCollin, because then.
McCollin.
Also.
I thought she did first also.
I did, I did the motion.
She's actually seconded right now.
Yep, I'm sorry, I, yep.
Okay. Hi, Larry.
Yes.
Helma?
Yes.
Collin?
Yes.
Noel?
No.
Lynn?
Yes.
Arkles?
Yes.
And Valerie?
Yes. All right, uh, so, yes, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Feedback and comments, we appreciate the work. Yeah. Yes.
Great, this takes us now to old business, and we don't, there is no old business at this time, any public comment? All right, seeing no public comment, then it takes us to consultant and administrative comments. All right, seeing none, commissioner comments. Mr. Noel, anything from the, the Toshack Planning Commission?
Uh, nothing to report.
Okay.
We have a meeting this week.
We do, Tuesday?
Yes.
All right.
No, Thursday.
Oh, Thursday, sorry. Sweet. Anything from the ZVA?
No.
Nothing? DDA, I don't see chief here, so, nothing.
They met last night, had a good meeting, gave out some drinks for facade and signs.
Yep.
We've had potential new DDA board members there present, that they're going to make a recommendation to council president for the September agenda. A lot of discussion about the multi-parking lot, about our engineering recommendations for removal of the laptop up there, to go full depth versus the spotty ground, or some full depth, some non-filled, that's what I was.
So, and now, it takes us, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Can I just make a quick comment, if nobody's got?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
In an effort to get a full council, we're changing all the council meetings for the rest of the year to the third Wednesday, because there was, we need, we have some things given up there on board, and we need a full board, and between the school board and vacations, we're having a. we were having trouble getting a full board, so, if anybody needs anything, make a note, third Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Second.
So I, uh, so I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we're adjourned, thank you.